Mr. Humphrey, Mr. Levitt.
Present.
Mr. Coen, Mr. Bagnati.
Here.
Mayor Beatty, Mr. Decker, Mr. Simpson, Councilman Werther.
Present.
Mayor Bowlin.
Here.
Chair Lee.
Here.
Okay, so is this our last meeting of this? John?
It's up to you.
You want to open with anything?
I have nothing. Well, if the director has anything to add to the information that we've provided.
I'll reserve my time till later in the agenda, sir.
Oh, okay. All right, so I guess we get to public comments. I don't have anybody here. So do we want to go through the?
Bylaws.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, as you know, we've been discussing the Commission's bylaws for several meetings now. And tonight, the intent of the Department is to provide you a summary of all of the discussion items that have led to changes to the current bylaws. The current bylaws have not been updated in several years, and that's kind of what led to the discussion about getting back to them and taking maybe a little bit longer look. As part of that, the Planning and Zoning Commission members asked us to do some research before we began the process of identifying potential changes. And that research included contacting the American Planning Association, and Mr. Werther has the thick book of information we receive from the APA in regards to this particular matter. Along with that, Mr. Newberry and I did some local research, reaching out to other communities in the vicinity of Wildwood and asking them all their bylaws, and then ultimately providing those to you as well. The intent of all of that was to give you a little background on what other communities and municipalities are doing, so you'd have something of a measuring stick relative to ours and what needed to be added. We talked at our first meeting about what items you all as a group would like to see, and you identified a small handful of them, which then were added to by the Department, which led to our final list of eighteen items. And so these eighteen items, for the most part, represent additions to the bylaws as they are adopted at this time. Along with what I would consider our final recommendation regarding the eighteen items, the Department, Travis and I, did provide you the three items that City Attorney Young had identified for us relative to ex parte communications. You've seen those before, but they are provided to you once again. Additionally, as part of the packet, we provided to you the items that Mr. Young, our city attorney, had identified relative to our current set of bylaws, so those are in conjunction to the eighteen items and support some of those eighteen items. And then finally, our existing adopted bylaws for the purposes of comparison. So, background-wise, local municipalities and their bylaws, a research of bylaws from across the country by the American Planning Association, the APA, input from the city attorney, and probably most importantly, at the end of the day, the eighteen items that collectively we discussed at several meetings, as mentioned. In terms of hieroglyphics, so to speak, yellow highlighted items were additions made over our first two work sessions. Along with those, there is certain items that show a single speck to run, again, from our first two meetings, and now, most recently, from our last meeting, there are additions that have been made, and they are identified by what I described as a highlighted turquoise color. And so collectively, there are three ways to show what we've done: yellow and turquoise highlights, and then a single speck to run for deletions. In terms of the quorum, at our last meeting, this is item one now, we wanted to reference all applicable codes relative to how a quorum is defined, and the commission's desire was to note first, Chapter 400, Article 1, from our Code of Municipal Ordinances, that's what established the Planning and Zoning Commission, the Wildwood City Charter were applicable, and then our fallback, which is Chapter 89 of Missouri Revised Statutes. That's the enabling legislation that allows communities like Wildwood to practice zoning, subdivision, and all of those front land use activities. I did not think there were any additional codes, statutes, or other that would need to be referenced, because again, it covers from the enabling legislation locally to create the Planning and Zoning Commission, which has been in place since September 1st, 1995, to our charter, which is a home rule document to therefore their state statutes, which enables all of that. So that's the addition in item number one. Mr. Young, is there any others that would be applicable that I should have promptly noticed and didn't?
No, for the purposes of the bylaws, no.
Yes, sir.
Just a minor grammar question. Chapter 89 of Missouri Revised Statutes, should it be the Missouri Revised Statutes as it is in number three? Just so that to match one way or the other?
I mean, technically, I believe in the draft I put, I just say RSMO, which is the appropriate abbreviation of the revised statutes of the state of Missouri. I would suggest just doing that, it's proper citation.
Thank you. Any others on item one? At our last meeting, then moving to item two, there was a discussion, not a lengthy discussion, about conflicts of interest. And so Mr. Young provided background on those. And for the most part, what we did with the ethics provisions or references, I felt would be applicable to conflicts of interest, and that again is that the Planning and Zoning Commission would adhere and be bound by all applicable city and state guidelines and codes governing the same. And so from that perspective, instead of trying to identify each and every code requirement, regulation, we defer to those laws, so to speak, that are already in place, that are applicable to, again, in this case, ethics and conflicts of interest. To do so, that's something that you will sentence one of, the key conflicts of interest at that location. Moving to page two, again, I'm just referencing the changes that have yet to be discussed because I really recommend it. On the committee structure, we had a nice discussion at our last meeting about how we handle things. We went from established committees with four members to ultimately all the members wanting to participate, and then Mr. Young reminded us that when we all do this, we're basically talking about a committee of the whole. So I wanted to reference that, but I did it parenthetically. So now it reads, "All committees of the Planning and Zoning Commission shall be led by the currently seated chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission as an expected member of it. Committees of the Planning and Zoning Commission shall contain a minimum of four members, and any member can attend any meeting of them and participate in whatever matters before them," committee of the whole. Then I tried to work with the core, the understanding of what constitutes a quorum in this case, and I added basically the discussion of the committee of the whole. So if a committee of the whole is seated, you need six, basically, to make recommendations. Number six is probably more difficult of the group. As you know, we talked about ex parte. The Department took delivery to leave it blank at our last meeting, two weeks ago, at work session. I did refine the language, that's the first highlighted turquoise section. But I did not change it in that the Planning and Zoning Commission members, as citizen members, are addressed in this particular description relative to ex parte communications. But I did leave the exemption for the city council liaison and the mayor in place. I guess what I would describe it as, given current rules, is there is a King and Queen of England, they're British citizens, but they're treated different than everyone else. In the case of the Planning and Zoning Commission, there are Planning and Zoning Commission members, but the liaison and the mayor have extra duties, authorities, and responsibilities. However, as one of the items that Mr. Young had identified, is this information provided on ex parte, I felt one of the statements was very appropriate, and that's the second highlighted turquoise box. And if nothing here is, shall be construed as imposing any limitation on free exchange of ideas, views, and information between any person and the commission, or any commissioner, provided that such communication relates to matters of the general policy, and do not address the merits of specific facts, evidence, claims, or positions presented or taken relative to an pending petition for. So you can talk, but if it's in a before you in a formal manner, I think it's best that collectively, the eight relevant citizen members speak as one body, not eight separate voices.
Chair, have a question.
Sure.
I'm sorry, who, the chair? Good, all right. So you, you mentioned meetings, well, we have in the first paragraph, it specifically states meetings, it doesn't say communications. And then the paragraph you're proposing, which I think is a good one, the second in the highlight, mentions more broadly communications. So is it the intent is to be limited to meetings only, or communications? And I'm assuming it's the latter, but?
It is the latter, at least from the perspective of the Department when we prepared the initial language, so my apology for mixing terms, but that's a very good point. I would like to extend to communications. I think it's in the best interest of the city as well as the Commission. If we don't just limit it to one forum where actually conversation can occur. And certainly, I know this isn't, in some regards, the direction of some of the members, but I really, I believe that as a city council member, an elected official, and as the mayor, another elected official, there's just certain things that those responsibilities, those positions bring, whether that are different than citizen members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. And I think it's appropriate to recognize it, and certainly engage in it, but I think it would be hard if we tried to manage it from a commission level. In fact, I think Mr. Young said it probably wouldn't work very much. And then on the last page, the items fifteen through seventeen were new, we first discussed them at our last meeting, two weeks ago, and out of that last meeting, the fourth item, number eighteen, came. So first, in terms of live streaming, we talked about as technically feasible, a qualifier. And then thereafter, I added again about subcommittee meetings, workshops, work sessions, and/or other meetings of the PNC shall be at the discretion of the PNC, but again, based upon technical feasibility, while being consistent with this desire to provide information and access to residents of the city whenever possible. Again, the overarching component here is the city council might vote, has basically said that all meetings that can be live streamed should be live streamed. We have some technical restrictions, we can't live stream two meetings at the same time in this building, and certainly, if we're not in this building, the issue becomes even more prevalent, so. But I think the intent is, if we can, we should. It may not be comfortable for us because of subject matter, the comments, whatever the situation may be, but I really feel like the intent is to bring access and information to our residents whenever possible. A tie vote, we had a brief discussion on that, and it really is covered in another section of the bylaws. It's not a new item, so I just thought it would be best to refer to that section. But we never said previously in our bylaws that a tie vote represents a denial because of a lack of majority. So I just wanted to make sure that that statement was clear, because that's come up on a couple of occasions over the years. Kind of all look at each other, who knows, a five-to-five tie, and everybody's like, well, it's denied. And then finally, the last discussion we had a couple of weeks ago was on absenteeism, and Mr. Young provided some background that there is really no penalty, and recommended if we wanted to proceed in this direction, we should basically provide some type of report to city council, which is the only entity in the city, in the city, that can address such. So the new component reads, "The Planning and Zoning Commission shall provide a report to city council regarding any member of this body that is absent for five consecutive meetings or during a calendar year does not attend more than 50% of the regularly scheduled meetings. This report shall be written for him with the dates of these missed meetings included and forwarded to the city council by the Department of Planning." The five meetings, consecutive meetings, and the 50%, those are numbers I just thought of. So if you all have better numbers, this is the time to do address some of the board.
So I actually was going to mention that item. So while the number five is not necessarily in a vacuum unreasonable, per se, what if it was, for example, Hidden Valley, or some big issue? That, not that all issues don't warrant attendance, but, you know, an issue that was considered by our residents to be greater in terms of concern, and it just so happens that of the five meetings that Hidden Valley was addressed, that particular person was not in attendance. So on a issue-by-issue basis, five meetings could become quite liberal in terms of, you know, not being there. I guess what I would just propose for discussion would be either reducing that, or at a minimum, having it read that it could be a lesser amount at the discretion of the chair upon approval of the commission, or maybe just at the discretion of the chair, or what have you. In other words, for those situations where any number of meetings, frankly, could be problematic for our residents, the commission, the council, what have you, there would be an ability to at least advise, certainly, the members of that ward, and I think the entire council of that, so.
Mr. Levitt.
Couple thoughts on your comments. We talked about it could be for different reasons, illness, some may be more acceptable than others. I think even without having the additional part on here, we always have the ability to give a report to council on anything that include it. And again, it's not, not asking for action, it's just making council aware, and if you're looking at lesser numbers, the council gets our minutes after each meeting and should be aware anyway. Just thoughts.
And again, I want to ensure, I want you all to understand that the numbers were, you know, to me, five meetings is roughly 10 weeks, so two and a half months out of 12 months, years. Or 50% would mean of our regular meeting schedule, making 12 of the 24. So.
So I don't disagree with what Councilor, or Commissioner Levitt said, very good points. One thing I just thought of, there is a process in our rules for removal, and that's sort of the implication of this, which would be if someone wasn't attending, then it would come before the council for removal. I guess, putting the five-meeting limit aside, I would be, I would be a little, I guess I'm concerned that if that were to occur hypothetically, obviously, we hope it wouldn't, that the person might be able to say, well, I made a minimum of half the meetings a year, which is a very low threshold, you know, you can't remove me because, I mean, that's what, that's what the guideline said, and sort of use this to bootstrap their, their ability to stay in a position that's only attending half the meetings.
Well, but it's a recommendation by us, the council, the council to make the action, right, or make a recommendation. It's a report by us, so we can't really do this itself, quote-unquote, right?
According to the city attorney from our last meeting.
Right.
The commission lacks any authority.
So it's just a recommendation anyway, so it doesn't really?
Or just a report.
Yeah, just a report.
And to your point, I think the ones that I recall reading through here, most of them are three to four, consecutive meetings, so five may be a little more liberal. However, I, even five, as long as somebody's open and communicating, granted, we've had commissioners and board members just simply, for lack of a better term, ghost us, and they've been impossible to find or reach. So in those circumstances, I think five is, five, you know, works fine in terms of reporting, but it's also one of those things we all are adults, quite frankly, we're supposed to be responsible individuals, and we should be able to communicate either with department heads, chairs, whatever the case may be, and say, hey, you know, I'm going to be missing X number, I got to go to Europe for this, and then my wife's got this, my kids have graduation, you know, so those things come into play. So I think if you're fine, it's fine. I don't have a big deal with a number one way or the other. My only other, yeah, no, that's, I just don't have a problem with the number, per se, I think it ultimates still just a record, a report, I mean, council's going to necessarily take action, but council being a political body, who knows, they might seize on it.
Mr. Network.
The only thing that I would add to it is, I'm fine with four or five days or whatever. I'm a little nervous if it's like a moving target, you know, it's like, if it's variable based on what's becoming in front of the commission, that could be used as a tool, you know, if, you know, I try not to be paranoid about those things in general, but it's like, you know, it's like, oh, for this person, it's only going to be three days, three misses in a row, for somebody else, it might be six. So I like the idea of having one particular number, no matter what it is, three, four, five, six, I don't care.
Mr. Chairman, may I make observations?
Yes, Mr. Young.
Just, you know, as we're talking about this, and I think it's been mentioned as we're going through this process, what we're talking about here procedurally is making a recommendation for essentially an impeachment proceeding of a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. You're reporting it to the city council, and that is a for cause basis for presumably removal, or, because that's really the action that the council has available to it, or maybe not reappointment. What this has is here, the language, the question, I guess, is, do you want to have that be a mandatory requirement or a permissive requirement? Meaning, do you want it to be shall report to the city council if someone misses five, or members are put on notice that five absences is basis for submission of a report to the council as a recommendation for removal?
Mr. Levitt.
I think it's best, the way it says shall, because that way it's not variable. And then the other part is.
You said something that caught me that I've lost now. I'll just stop at that part until it comes back.
Airbowl.
Okay, so that's, what you just said, John, is, it definitely heightens my concern about, does this become, this is an impeachment referral, essentially, does it then become a defense potentially to someone that can basically get by with attending, it's put the five aside, I'm more concerned about half the meetings of the commission. In other words?
Attend four, miss, attend, miss four, attend one, miss four, attend one.
Yeah, you know, and so you can't get rid of me, because your article, your bylaws say that, you know, the referral requires I miss half the meetings a year, I haven't done that. You know, I've stayed five consecutive, you know, I missed four, then one, whatever, but, you know, I mean, that's, that's, if that's going to be an impeachable, the initiation of an impeachable item, that really does seem to me to be, seem to be a little low. What about this compromise? I'm just going to throw this out. During the work session at the council meetings, much like the council, all the attendance of the council is put to the public in the Gazette, what if the Planning and Zoning Commission just has a bi-weekly report that goes to the council, it summarizes kind of what it does and so forth, like we do with the rural internet, and it mentions attendance, and just be done with it, and not get into specifics and let the council, depending on the issues, make its decision as it needs to?
I think we do that, though, where all of the minutes have who's here and who isn't. So.
But those aren't provided to the council?
They're just available online.
So it'd just be sort of a one-pager that says, you know?
I don't know, I personally, this is a volunteer thing, and if you're not going to be here, why do you want to volunteer for it? You know, that's, I mean, we do this for, not because we're elected, so to speak, so.
Certainly not for compensation.
No, so.
So.
I don't know.
So.
Go ahead.
So if you could just put, I mean, keep the language, if you could just put, when you're doing this, I mean, this isn't the actual language, is it?
No.
Okay, so when we get to the actual language, if you could just include something from a legal perspective that does not hem the council into removal, if it's a lesser, I mean, there could be other things going on that do or do not involve attendance, that you've got attendance, attendance issues that, I just don't want to put the council in a position that, I attended just less than half the meetings, you can't get rid of me, even though I've done all these other things, I think that that's my, if we could just do that, I'd be happy.
Just to provide some history here, Mr. Vanish, repeat me straight, I recall
two, two times in our past when planning and commission members have been brought before council for impeachment consideration. The first time, as I recall, was, for lack of a better way of putting it, because members of council, and I guess the mayor at the time, did not care for the speech of that individual. So they decided to bring that individual forward for impeachment consideration. The second time was because the commission member was delinquent on fees or taxes owed to the city, as I recall, and which council did take action and did remove that individual. First one, they did not. So it's interesting, in all our history, we've not had the, quote-unquote, attendance concern creep its ugly head up. It's nice to have a guideline. Do I expect that to be the sole thing that would drive a, an impeachment by council members? No, not based on what I've seen.
Commissioner Green, I've been quiet.
Yeah, and I, and I think I was the one who brought this up last time, if I'm not mistaken, and I kind of got the impression the last time that we had kind of decided to leave this out, period, because there were too many variables that, that could come into play. I mean, you get into the situation where someone, and obviously, it can be taken into consideration the way that this is written here, but if you get into the issue of someone being ill, but being able to come back, no questions asked, once, you know, they have pneumonia, or in a major car accident, or, you know, whatever, you know, and I think maybe just, I think, just leaving it, and I was, was fine at the end of last meeting, was just not doing anything about it, and the council has that authority anyway to, to bring someone up and.
As they have.
Remove them if. Remove them if they feel it's warranted. So I, I guess I don't, after the discussion, I don't think it needs to be in there, period. It's just too many, too many variables.
Fair ball.
For all the reasons, volunteers, too many variables, setting a bar for removal, I would favor, I think it's a thicket, I would favor just leaving it out.
Okay. Again, from my notes, there was, in your case, a decision that maybe it wasn't necessary because, as Mr. Young had explained, there is provisions already for city council review, but there wasn't a clear consensus.
Okay, and that's fine.
And so from the department's perspective, let's put it out there, give some language and see what people say. As council member Werther's mentioned, we typically don't have this problem.
We've had more of this problem at council than we have here, over our time.
Without the rule, it came up twice anyway, so we don't need a rule. If it is going to happen, it's going to happen, and we're probably going to need a motion to strike eighteen. First from Commissioner Green, and second by Commissioner Leavitt. All those in favor? Say aye. Aye. Opposed? Let's see. It looks like we, no more eighteen.
We have seventeen items. Those collectively were what were discussed at our May twenty, two thousand nineteen meeting. At this time, Mr. Chair, I think the seventeen are open for discussion. I think the point that Mayor Bowlin made, this wording is planning wording. We'll ask the city attorney to refine it so it works better, as bylaw language. So what you're seeing here is the thought, the direction, some of the specifics. The city attorney, Mr. Murray Green, I will put it in final form, once we've got consensus from the group, that this is final form.
Mr. Young, do you have any comments to close it up?
Uh, not at this time, no, thank you, Mr. Young.
All right. Do we need to act on the seventeen? Or not?
Mr. Chair, I would respectfully request for the purposes of the commission's consideration of motion and second being made to authorize the city attorney and department of planning to integrate the seventeen items as presented tonight into the existing bylaws with the appropriate...
Okay, and have a motion. Who accept? Commissioner Green, aye. Second, Commissioner Neffler. And question from Commissioner Leavitt.
Does that mean it will then come back to us in that final form?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
I briefly mentioned at the end of the regular session last, on May twenty, that we'd have this, and then we'd get it all in final draft form, and then we'd see it kind of looking more like this than this. And we could still make changes then, but it would be what we would consider the final draft or after.
Okay.
Will that be at another work session, or...
No, I was going to do it at a regular session.
Okay, okay.
All right. Voiceful, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Absentient, passes.
The department would like to thank all of you for your participation. It was a good discussion. I'd like to thank Mr. Young for his participation.
Your question was, just out of curiosity, meeting minutes for the work session agendas, I'm assuming we're taking the work we've done on these as those minutes, since we've got nothing else?
And we have the live stream, so if there are questions that would arise, we could reference any of the live stream recordings of the...
We'll just fund the search.
Anything else anybody wants to discuss?
Mr. Chair, that's all we have as far as our work session tonight, but just as a reminder, at seven o'clock, we would appreciate your attendance in the other meetings.
We need it. We're, we're at a limit here. I have a motion to adjourn. Commissioner Leavitt?
Second.
And Mayor Bowlin, second. All of you in favor say aye. Aye. And let's see. Over.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Let's go with this one.